Good afternoon. The witching hour has arrived. I'd like to welcome you all to the October 31st Board Meeting of the Johnson County Community College Trustees. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate you all being here at an earlier hour on this special, special day of Halloween. We're sorry that the schedule was, was changed, but we had some conflicts during the month, and so this ended up being the best Thursday. Roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlist.
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Kevin Wimpey, Roberta Everslaj, Bill Henderson, Cindy Perez, Jamea Haynes, Chris Rozell, and Rebecca Clark.
Thank you, and thanks for being here. We appreciate your attendance at the meeting. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sobchak.
Dr. Cook, we have no awards or recognitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door of each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium and should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues, or matters that are being addressed through established grievances or suggestion processes, or are otherwise the subject of review by the college or board. We have one registered speaker this evening, Chris Rozell. Chris, would you please come to the podium?
Yes, sir.
And I know that we have it, but if you would state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Chris Rozell. My address is 4823 Mohawk Drive, Roland Park, Kansas. Today, I'm going to suggest the board and suggest three things to the board. Given that social responsibility is one of the institutional outcomes for the college, I think that there are three ways, three easy ways, big ways, to increase social responsibility outcomes. One is to delegate the responsibility for social responsibility achievement to someone at the college, and have them responsible to set a goal, measure achievements, and continually improve processes. Another is host elections at Johnson County Community College. The democratic process, the civic engagement, is one of your social learning outcomes. You have probably around 24,000 registered voters at the college. The chairman of elections, the commissioner of elections of Johnson County would love to have elections hosted at the college. It would increase participation and turnout. And lastly, before elections, inform and facilitate student and staff participation in the elections. All of these would increase students and staff exercising social responsibility. Let me explain the part I said about goals, measurements, and continual improvement as part of the way to increase social responsibility. Bill Gates said, "I have been struck again and again by how important measurement is to improving the human condition." Robert Hare said, "Science cannot progress without reliable and accurate measurement of what it is you are trying to study. The key is measurement. Simple as that." Yet at JCC, as far as I can tell, we have no goal and no intentional measurement of social responsibility. Why not? One of the goals is social responsibility, and it says, "Be prepared to practice community engagement that reflects democratic citizenship," and other things. What better measure of preparation is there than actually voting in elections and participating in discussions? Regarding social responsibility, when I compared 2018 to 2014 at the college, I looked and said, "Wow, there was an impact on voter registration." Did you notice that? There was an impact, a drastic change in voter participation, 300% among 18- to 21-year-olds at the college. Did you see the, has the college studied why these changes occurred? Have they analyzed it? What were the key influencing factors? These are things I think the college needs to look at. Another thing is 2019, for our primary, we only had 8.5% turnout in the county. Why was that? What happened? What was our role in that? What is the college's goal in social participation? We need to be clear on what the goal is, what the measures are, and how we're progressing, and continually improve our processes. To summarize, I think three things need to be done. Delegate the responsibility to someone and hold them accountable. Host elections at Johnson County Community College so that it's easier to participate in our society. Last, ensure that staff and students are informed about their elections and the issues at stake. With those things, I think we will improve social responsibility. The college is doing very well, but we've got to continually improve. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a comment with regards to that. Jeff Horers here, and Jeff Horers, aware of all the bookings that we have. Several years ago, we got a call from the Board of Elections. They needed help last minute. Could they ask us to host, I guess, a polling place? Which we do. The college has hosted election. I don't know if you're aware of that, but they did. Jeff, how many times have we done that?
We're still doing it.
We're still doing it for the...
We've done it every time since they asked us the first time.
Really? Where do we, where do we have that at?
It's terrific. It happens at the police academy, and what works so well about it is the police academy has that other entrance because a poller expects to pull in, park, and walk in. And through the help of the police department, we can make that possible at the police academy without impacting the rest of the student body too negatively.
And how is our relationship with the Board of Elections? Is that the proper name?
Sure. Sure. The system is our hosting contact, so he has the most contact with them, but we always track down and have a great relationship with them.
Yeah, I just want everybody to know that the college cooperates to the maximum that it can when called upon by the local election board, and we host those on campus.
Okay, thank you. Board reports, Student Senate, Ann Keat, Mr. Persai.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see, is there the... So, Student Senate report. We've had a bunch of new changes since the last time I was here. We've got a new secretary. The old one, unfortunately, had some issues, so she had to resign her position. But we found a very suitable replacement in Michael. He is a math and political science major. He's also the president of PALA. It's a club on campus that's for, I think, political engagement and leadership. So he brings a lot to that table in that kind of sense. He's also the past president of the math and engineering club, so he has that aspect to his qualifications. We've got new senators, and we've got new senators coming in every day. Unfortunately, we do have a little turnover rate issue that's happening in Senate, but that's to be expected in a college that has the same, I guess, turnover rate in terms of students. So we've got J-Rock, Jared Tompkins. He's majoring in respiratory therapy. He's very passionate about mental health. He's had some experiences throughout his life, so he wants to kind of prevent these from happening to the students at JCCC. And basically, he's taking on some initiatives to combat this. And yeah, he wants to promote some mental health and just general health consciousness. He's from Texas, but he's currently in Kansas, and he says he loves every moment of it. Next, we've got Lena Kasherhun. She's majoring in liberal arts, and she's also passionate about mental health. The general theme that I've seen in our senate for this semester seems to be that there's a lot of focus on mental health, and we're working with the JCCC administration and the college in the whole to hopefully kind of make this a highlight issue for this semester and work on some initiatives to combat such problems if we can, and just make students aware of the resources that we already have at JCCC so we can kind of direct more students to those resources and hopefully prevent them from going through a struggle that would, you know, arise. We've got Jayden. He is an international student. He's originally from Nairobi, Kenya. He's also very involved on campus as a student admissions ambassador, and his, I guess, major is pre-med. And he brings a lot to the table because he kind of has that first initial contact with potential students for JCCC as an admissions ambassador. So he has that, we've got a little feedback pipeline through him where students can come to him and say, "Okay, oh, this is what I expected JCCC to be like. This is what I'm seeing." So he gets that initial interaction with students and brings that to us, which is very valuable for us to reflect on. We've also got Faith. She is another ambassador. She's with the Engagement Department under Student Services, and she's originally from Kenya. She's a nursing major, and she's very passionate about her faith, and that brings another aspect and another dynamic to our senate. The budget and events. So we've so far allocated a lot of budgets to the clubs on campus to help them go to their events and be successful in student, I guess, extracurriculars. We've got the Model UN. So every year, JCCC sends a team to a conference, and we've kind of already allocated budget for both those events that happen every semester. We've had the Luna Club, which is Latinos United Now and Always. They wanted to go to a HACU conference, which is an annual conference for Latino clubs around the U.S. to kind of mingle and get some experience and some connections made in the professional world, and just to expand their horizons and see how they could improve their club more than they already have. So we, we approved the budget for them. The International Club had a kickoff party. As most people already know, the International Club's the biggest one on campus, and they're also the more, most active. And this kickoff party, I think they had around a lot of people. It could have been even closer or above 100 people going to this. So it's a great way for students to get to know more people, and it's open to everyone, not just international students. So it's very inclusive, and it promotes a lot of bonding in the campus. The big things that are coming up, we have is JCCC Gives. So this is one of the biggest initiatives that we take on as a senate. This is where we kind of give back in the holiday season and try and provide for those who don't have a lot. For that, we're, we're in the process of fundraising. Our goal is around $3,000, and we've got a couple of events already in the work to get to that goal. We've got a trivia night that's happening on November 22nd, and I invite everyone that's already here and anyone that might be watching. We will have a registration fee for teams. We're looking at four or five people to a team, and then we'll try and get them set up. And it's a, again, it's a fundraising event. There will hopefully be food. We'll set up a page where maybe they can order from the food court, or they could potentially get some dessert that we've provided. And it'll be a great night. We've got the planning down for it. There's going to be a lot of hard questions. We're hoping to get all the professors and faculty people involved into some teams, maybe even get a team of department heads, so we could really test out people's knowledge. So that is what we're trying to do for the fundraising aspect of JCCC Gives. We recently had a very successful event in Trick or Treat for Kids. So this is an event that we do to bring out or kind of celebrate the kids of all the people that come to JCCC and give them a time to go and enjoy Halloween. This happened in COM 156, which is around the lunch area in Student Center, and the theme was, again, cats and bats. We had a very big turnout all throughout the night. Eleven clubs signed up to table at the event and help out, you know, kind of give out stuff like candy, and then entertain the kids. The senators helped very well with decorations, and you can see that's kind of the group that stayed from the start to the very end. They helped setting up, and they even helped clean up at the very end. So that's what we've done so far. We hope to do a lot more as the time goes on, and that is the senate report. I hope everyone has a happy Halloween.
Ann Keat, what's the night of the trivia night again?
November 22nd.
We'll have to plan to be somewhere because you asked for talent.
Yeah, so it'll be around 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the afternoon, and it should be a fun time.
Trustee Musso.
Would you circulate to the board or ask Ms. Schlist to circulate how we can donate to JCCC Gives?
Yeah, sure.
We always think about it at the November meeting, and nobody has a checkbook or whatever, and then we don't have a meeting until after you're, you're done with the semester.
Right.
So if you could let us know next meeting, that'd be great.
We already have a vendor page set up for JCCC Gives where you can donate. All you have to do kind of search is through that JCCC search thing on the JCCC website, which is jccc.edu. You can just search up JCCC Gives, and I think the first two pages are the ones where the donation link is already present. I will verify that and basically give out that information hopefully in the next meeting.
Can I explain what writing a check means to a millennial?
Well, I understand that, and I was...
I'll go online, and I'll do it.
I'm going to challenge Ms. Schlist here to see, if I brought you a check, would you see that, Ann Keat?
Yeah. Thank you guys so much.
Before you leave, and you're probably going trick-or-treating, and you need to leave early, but I just wanted to say that Ann Keat serves on our search committee for the presidential search, and in our meetings has been a rock star representing the students. So thank you very much for that. Appreciate it, Ann Keat.
I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
If I can add to that, because she's here and doing a phenomenal job too. Delal, who's another officer for the senate, is serving on the shared governance committee and representing students very well also.
She's doing a great job.
Thank you very much, both of you. Appreciate it. Next item, college lobbyist, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members of the Board of Trustees. From this point on through until about January 14th, when the legislature returns, it's all going to be about revenues and budgets, and that's kind of where we're at right now. Normally, I would be giving you a month-end revenue report, and we're at the month end for October, so we're almost a month late in the September numbers. But September revenues to the state of Kansas were up considerably, $47.6 million. That is due in part to that being the end of the first quarter for the state, and a lot of the estimated payments come in at that point. Similarly, October generally represents another month where we see additional revenues coming into the state coffers. So tomorrow, we might get those numbers, but I'll certainly report on those at the November board meeting. The Board of Regents has submitted its unified budget request to the Governor's Budget Office. That amount is $95.3 million for all of higher education in Kansas. That's an enhancement, rather. So those would be new, a request for new dollars. Of that portion, about $35 million breaks out between community colleges, technical colleges, and Washburn University. And so that first 50 or so roughly goes to, to the state universities. There probably will be a, an appeal. It's really more of a conversation. The formal process is called an appeal process when members of the staff of finance at the Board of Regents sit down with the Governor's Budget Office and talk through some of the things that maybe the Budget Office was confused about or had questions about. One of those things likely will be an additional, a supplemental request to fund some additional students that we had in Senate Bill 155 and in those programs. That was not included in the initial budget request that the board made. That number amounts to about $6.2 million for, for the fiscal year 2020. So that's the current fiscal year that we're in. The fiscal year 2021 budget includes about $12 million enhancements for Excel, CTE, and career and tech ed programs. So again, it's, it's more of a conversation process that occurs over the next month or so, as the Governor's Budget Office begins to develop its budget recommendations for the legislature that will come out in January, when the governor makes her State of the State speech. And that will be at the point where we have the official, the official numbers, the official document that is being recommended by the administration. The numbers that we arrive at in the budgeting process are usually pretty close to what the Governor's Budget Recommendations are, so we have yet to see what, what happens. But that overall unified request is $95.3 million for, for higher ed in Kansas. I want to talk a little bit about a number of requests that, that staff have been working on diligently over the past couple of weeks, and that is leading up to the next Legislative Budget Committee hearing in November. It's November 18th and 19th, if I remember right. It might be, I might have my dates wrong. We've got a lot of committee meetings coming up, but it's mid-November nonetheless, and that is when, and I've been reporting on this since the interim topics were approved, that is the meeting where the Legislative Budget Committee will be addressing community college budget models, efficiencies, different entities related to the budgeting process at the community college system in Kansas. Now, there will be some other reviews of state university tuition, and are they meeting the mark as far as, that's a constant challenge between the legislature and the Board of Regents at the state university level. But staff has been diligently producing information to satisfy those requests, and it's not just at this institution. It's at the other 18 as well. And when you think about the massive amount of information that is, is being collected and then put together, every, every institution does it differently. And so that's quite a challenge, and, and we'll be talking about what those reports look like at the Legislative Budget Committee hearings in mid-November. And then finally, Mr. Chair, we've begun the process of the, we, we call them the Legislative Breakfast Series, but we like to meet with our legislators before they head back to Topeka in January, and so information will be forthcoming about, about those meetings as they, as they get set, so that you will have the opportunity to participate and have input. So I would stop there.
Do we usually do those in December?
That is correct.
So keep a heads up for that. We'd like to have everybody participate in those sessions, and it's a chance for us to meet with the delegation, the Johnson County delegation at least. Any questions, Mr. Carter? Anything being discussed that would be a surprise to the community college movement in terms of a bill development?
I don't have any sense on bills as far as policy is concerned right now. I do think that we will be visiting the out-district tuition conversation. What that, how that actually looks as it begins to take place is, is yet to be seen. There could be legislation that comes about as a part of that conversation, but this all result revolves around the conversation that was started a year and a half or so ago down in, down in Butler. And so I think we'll, we'll see continued impacts.
Trustee Musso.
Just so I'm clear, the, what started a year and a half ago was the discussion about, well, Sedgwick County folks coming to Butler County. But I want to get back to the thing we've, we've been most concerned about is, is some statewide mill levy that would go to community colleges across the country, and with property tax issues in Johnson County already on the table, is there any movement to impose that? Because we know that for every dollar we, that is collected from here, we will not get a dollar back.
Yeah, I've not seen efforts that would indicate that that is, that is getting ready to occur, and that's likely not a bill that would be prefiled. It'll, it could be dropped, but I don't, I don't really see that one coming. I know that, that has been discussed. I think more concerning is, is potential for different types of legislation around commercial property and property reevaluation, and what that looks like and how that impacts the college, especially given the fact that, I'm not sure what the timeline is for, for an appeal, but you know, we had the Walmart decisions, just the Walmart decisions in January through the Board of Tax Appeals, and, and the process that that then goes into, and all of the other appeals that are, that are in the backlog. So that, that would be more of a concern to me, I think.
Well, my concern is this, that if I want a statewide mill levy because I am a community college in rural Kansas that doesn't have a large assessed value, then I say, "Well, I will trade that off by charging more out, out-of-district tuition, and just give me a one-mill statewide levy instead of two mills, and I'll, I'll raise tuition out of district." So it makes it look like kind of a give and take, when in fact, it's mostly a take, at least from property taxpayers in Johnson County. So to me, that looks like a nice way to roll this into a package to still get ultimately a statewide mill levy that helps us fund others.
Well, that's not giving anybody any ideas.
I'm sure I'm not the first one to think of that.
You're not.
I'd rather that every service area taxes their service area counties a mill, and then we can start from there, which they don't do now. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Carter? Thank you. Have a good evening, trick-or-treating. Faculty Association, Dr. Harvey.
Hello. Okay, so I have a few things. First, I want to say, um, the dedication of the Career and Technical Education Building was really cool on October 10th. That was a great, it was a great event. It was really, it's a beautiful space, and it was fun to see the faculty that teach over there, how excited they are about, about the space and the equipment and everything that, the facilities that they have to teach in. It's, it's really incredible. My favorite thing from that event was Dean Richard Fort talked about that faculty have commented about the change in students since they got into the new building. And that doesn't surprise me at all, but I thought it was interesting. It kind of stuck with me. They said their students seem, I mean, they're same students, but they seem like different students. They're, they come ready to learn, enthusiastic, they act more professional. And I think that that's so true of people. If you put them in, in a professional setting with modern technology and all the things that they need to learn, then they, the students start seeing themselves as professionals. And so you're going to see that in, in everything that they do. So I think that's one of the, the best gifts to that area and to our students, is just that they're going to be in this very professional setting, and I think they're going to be, their education's going to just be so much better because of it. So that's awesome. Many of our faculty have been working very hard on this Academic Branch Shared Governance Task Force. I know there's a few on the college-wide task force, but I, that you mentioned before with the Student Senate on it. But the, we have an Academic Branch Shared Governance Task Force that is made up primarily of faculty from all over campus, and they have been meeting every week, but not just that. They have subcommittees that have been meeting for multiple hours each week, and I've been hearing from some of them because they'll come to me to run things by me, and, and I'm getting feedback, and they're working so hard, and they're feeling, they have a very difficult task that they've undertaken, and the days are flying by, and I think they feel this impending deadline coming upon them and, and need to have something ready to present. So, but they've been working very hard, and very thankful to my colleagues who are doing all of that work, in addition to teaching their classes and doing all the other things that they do here. Another thing I wanted to mention is, some enchanted evening, you know, the Faculty Association usually shares a table at the event, and, or, or get, last year, we bought a table. This year, we were gifted some tickets at a couple of tables, so we're going to have some Faculty Association members at tables with Angelina Lawson, trustee Lawson, and trustee Cross as well. And so because of that, we are using our usual budgeted money that we usually give towards that, and we're going to give it to the Student Emergency Fund. So our faculty are very excited to be able to give, I think we're giving $1,500 to the Student Emergency Fund, and that's something that especially our counselors see firsthand when they have students who are in crisis and need something to help them stay in school, stay afloat, that they're able to step in with funds like that. And so that's one of the things that is partnering with the foundation to provide for students when they do have emergencies, and our students do have those happen. for students when they do, um, have emergencies and our students do have those happen. So I've been a part of the Presidential Search Committee, and, uh, one of the things that we did, we, we got a draft, you'll be looking, talking about that later. Um, I'm going to go home and, and celebrate handing out candy in my neighborhood instead of, uh, sticking around, but I'm sure you'll be discussing this. The, um, we had a draft of, uh, the ad for the position from the search firm, and we held a listening session on October 21st, and that was attended by, uh, most of the search committee was able to be there, and then, um, a lot of faculty and staff primarily filled that room, gave lots of very specific feedback. If they didn't give specific feedback, I followed up with the faculty and said, okay, give me specific language, what do you want? So we were able to meet October 24th as a group, and we have such a great group, it's a, it's a very good working group of a lot of different people, different voices, but all, um, worked very well together. I was very pleased. Um, we met, we made major overhauls to the draft, that, and that's the one that you're seeing now is the one that our committee worked over. And we incorporated, um, a lot, I think almost every suggestion, request that we had brought to us. Um, the ones that I think were most near and dear to the hearts of faculty that I brought forward on their behalf, and we all heard them speak on, was, uh, just making sure that we described the rich cultural and diversity, cultural diversity found in the Kansas City metro area. This is not, we don't want people to think of Kansas and think, um, Dorothy and Oz and all of that. We want them to realize what Kansas City has to offer, and being part of that metro area is, is a big draw. Um, also the diversity of our student body, uh, just describing that in that ad, I think, is important, so people understand, um, the wide range of students that we, uh, help and work for. And then also, um, the addition, the most, maybe the most important to me is the addition of a statement of contributions to diversity as part of the application materials. I think that is, um, a very progressive thing for us to do. Um, a lot of schools across the country are requiring those in all sorts of applications for, for employment. And so I think it's going to be a really useful information to look at those statements we receive from, from candidates. Um, I think it's going to be really good. So I'm real excited about the process so far, I'm very hopeful, hope we get lots of great applicants. And finally, the last thing I wanted to mention is, I don't know if you've heard about the Kansas Can redesign project in K through 12. Have, have you guys heard that, anything? I see Mickey shaking his head, okay. So, um, I've been hearing a little buzz about it because my kid's school was selected to go through the redesign this year. So Kansas, it's, this is something going on in K through 12, and it's called Kansas Can redesign, and they're, it's in phases. And so they piloted certain number of schools, and then they have the next phase, I believe they're calling this the Apollo Phase, and, um, there's more schools added, and, um, my students, or my, my kids, my, um, two boys go to a high school that was chosen for this, and this year is the planning year, and so one of mine will be graduating, but my youngest is a freshman, and so he came home talking about it, and I was at a KNEA meeting with K through 12 teachers, and we were talking about it, and I keep hearing about it. So I thought I would just mention it to you because it is going to affect us down the road. However students in K through 12 are learning is going to impact us because they're going to come to us with a way that they learn. And so it's just like anything, this is something that we're going to be seeing. Right now, nobody exactly can describe what it is, um, very well. You ask and they say, I mean, even the teachers are like, we don't know what it is exactly yet. Um, but I will say, I got this email, and I'm just going to read one little section. Uh, my son's take home was, uh, what he remembered from the description that he heard at school was that they think students need more sleep and that school might need to start later. But that was the only, the only thing that he remembered. But basically, it says, "When a student's learning is designed around what he or she is passionate about, the likelihood of that student graduating and moving toward a successful future increases." And also there's this focus on some of the social, emotional growth, things that are not just academic, some of the non-academic skills, um, that they want to also focus on in addition to academic skills. So as far as exactly what it's going to look like, I don't know, and everybody asks, doesn't have a real good idea. But supposedly it's supposed to take the best things that we do and, you know, work from that. So, uh, and make it a little more individualized approach to learning, but it will impact us because those are our future students. And that concludes my report.
Did your son, when he sent you that message, do it in a certain rhythm? What you don't know is her son's an outstanding drummer.
Well, this is my youngest.
Oh, this wasn't the drummer.
He's a trombone player.
Oh, okay.
But no, he, we were just talking, I was like, so, oh, redesign, you talked about the school, so what, this was an email I got from the principal, but, but he, he came home from school and he said, you know, what, um, he was talking about this redesign thing at school, we talked about it. I was like, oh, really? Okay, tell me about it, because nobody knows what it is, what is it? And he was articulating some of the same language, but mostly, I don't really know, he said, and then, uh, well, I remember something about how kids need more sleep, and so we might start later. And then he remembered something about it being more individualized to people's interests. So I think, um, that was the take home. But you're right, my oldest is a senior, and he's an outstanding drummer, so.
So you've got a trombone player and a drummer. Do you sing or play an instrument? Because I can see the Harvey Trio.
Yes. Well, my husband's a musician, yeah, we do music.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, we're all, we're all musicians.
And as you're leaving, I would like to also say that, uh, Melanie's, we'll have a, a more detailed report later on regarding the search, but, uh, really appreciate your help, Melanie, on that as well. You've had a lot of good impact, and, uh, I, I do think we, I, I, my only point is I don't know that we got everybody's idea because we did get 170 responses on the survey and, um, but you're right.
We captured a lot of the major things that people asked for.
Thank you, travel safely.
Thank you.
Uh, Johnson County Research Triangle, uh, Trustee Cross, Trustee Cross couldn't be here tonight, did he submit a report? I'm not sure they met, uh, I think, if I remember correctly, they hadn't met, so we will have no report there. Uh, KACC, Trustee Lawson.
Thank you. So KACC is going to have our next meeting here at the college, December 6th and 7th, and more information's going to come out about that, they have not put out their agenda yet. So there is typically a tradition where trustees get together before and go golfing the day of the meeting. A lot of them come from long distance in the rule, so there's a tradition of golfing in the morning, and so I'm looking to put together a small golfing thing, so I will put that out for the public to know that, uh, that will be going on, and of course trustees will, uh, be invited to that, and more information as that comes along because we need to figure out the timing and stuff like that.
Now, in case the weather is a little questionable on that day.
Well, most golf courses are closed right now, but there's top golf.
Consider Top Golf, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so once we put those things together, everyone will know, so that if you wanted to stop by, you're more than welcome to.
Maybe a swim meet.
Swim meet, no, I'm not going to be in the winter time. Uh, so we had our, uh, National ACCT Conference in San Francisco, and I wanted to, I'm on the, uh, National Committee for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, so I just wanted to give an update on that committee as well as, uh, I was invited to a panel at ACCT to talk about tuition policy, so it's going to be a little bit lengthy, and then I will turn it over to Trustee Ingram because she was also on a national committee and a panel as well, so we can kind of go over some of those details. So in our Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Committee, uh, I brought forward of some proposals for creation of a written and proven language, uh, to document the best practices for the policies that are implemented in the DEI, uh, that's the terminology, DEI, in all the phases of community colleges around the country. So this next meeting that we had was, we looked at those proposals that were brought forward, and looking at the work that we can do in this committee to put together an actual published, uh, packet that other trustees can then look at and assess their board policies by, also have an open resource so the public can make those assessments as well, and businesses or other colleges that might not have access to, uh, information that might only be presented in board retreats, or specifically if you purchase this membership. So that was a really good discussion that we had, and of course, if we have the true commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, we should be able to show that we can follow these kinds of programs that are national, um, colleges are, that everyone's coming together and starting to put this, um, forward and rolling these out in increments that also stay up with the pace that we are seeing in changes in populations for community colleges, uh, hiring practices, our RFPs, knowing how to include our businesses. A lot of businesses are leading the way in this process, so how do we align ourselves with the business market that we are helping to, uh, create the workforce for them so that there's a seamless transition there? So that was some really good discussion. Um, part of the, uh, plan to, for commitment for DEI is also to include training for board members so that we can understand how to look at the policies through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. And that was the bulk of the committee, so a lot of the work is going to continue on, and that will start rolling out as we see those, uh, jet, the packets being published, and that will be something exciting to present. The next part was the panel that I was on. I was invited to be on the panel to discuss the tuition policy, and that was with Dr. Tony Hopper, who's the president from San Juan College, John Thompson, who is the chair of the San Juan College Board, Dr. Daniel Philan, who's the Jackson Community College President, and then Dr. Edward DeBless, who's the, uh, Executive Director of San Juan College. And it was really nice to be able to have these discussions since a lot of these members are on other boards and institutions. So for example, Dr. Daniel Philan is actually part of the chair for the Higher Ed Research and Development Institute. He's also the chair of the president's side of ACCT, which, that works with trustees, he's on the president's side. So having these kinds of voices at the table to really understand the differences that we're seeing in the nation and other states, seeing the differences of why student, certain colleges might need to raise tuitions, uh, what are the reasons for that, how do they present their rubric and scientific method to, uh, roll out the reasons that the public understands the increase and why some colleges are not. So it was, uh, I think, a really good discussion. I was glad to be a part of that role, uh, as a trustee there to bring forward some best practices back. I thought that was really great. And really grateful for Dr. McLeod and the, um, things that he had mentioned to me before, and some of the work that, uh, he's doing with the chancellors and around the state. I was able to talk about that in that committee, which gave a lot of ideas to some of the colleges that are struggling to figure out where some other avenues to gain revenue from. So because it was a significant difference in the funding mechanisms that we were discussing throughout the country, we were able to talk about how to build, uh, different policies going forward. And then, um, that, the, the bulk of the actual conference itself was really focused on a lot of oversight, a lot of onboarding processes for new presidents, new trustees. There seems to be a lot of colleges that are also experiencing, uh, transitions like that, so it was really nice to see, uh, how important oversight is in the process and the structure that different boards go through, as we've noticed some of the, uh, colleges going through some pretty intense, um, situations that might have benefited from better oversight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then Trustee Ingram?
Well, I'll go ahead. I am part of the Member and Communications Committee, and we were kind of challenged in, and our conversation over the past year has really been about increasing membership to ACCT and consideration of the cost to do so, the cost to attend conferences and national meetings. And I think as we look locally at KACC, out of our 19 colleges, I don't believe we had half of those institutions represented. It was close to that, I think maybe eight were there. But, um, one of the biggest obstacles for those colleges to attend is simply the cost to send trustees and their presidents there. So we are looking at other options. They used to have regional meetings, so they're taking a look at holding regional meetings again and kind of filling in some of the gaps since we meet twice a year. Um, staff is going to take a look at the schedule and work to come up with some of the best-case scenarios, basically, is what will happen as a result of that. We also, um, talked about ACCT being the national voice for federal Pell Grants. You know, it's, it's just kind of assuming, uh, the responsibility of what we need from ACCT, and we do a lot locally, but on a national level, they, they are the voice for all of us, so they reminded us of that. They are looking at a couple of new publications, uh, they're very involved with educating trustees, and so they are looking at a couple of new educational pieces that they think will be very important. The percent, uh, excuse me, um, they did have the third highest attendance at this conference, so they were really encouraged about that. But communications is, is just the biggest piece to, uh, what we were discussing and how we can continue to educate our local community colleges through our state associations. So I'll kind of finish with that. Um, I was a part of a roundtable, uh, with Dr. Weber, I'll go back to my little paper work here, because I don't remember the two names, Dr. Karen Miller, who was a provost and executive vice president of Cuyahoga Community College, and one of their trustees, Anne Frangos, uh, also from Cuyahoga. And we were talking about, uh, removing policy and procedural barriers for increased access and student success. So part of what we did as a roundtable, uh, we thought we were going to have a, a platform where we spoke for about 20 minutes and people would rotate, that didn't occur, so we got very involved in a nice conversation. Um, but we were talking about academic standing requirements, uh, holes that were blocking student enrollment, graduation application requirements, uh, no required support for students continuing enrollment after suspension appeals. So there were a number of barriers that we spoke to and how we resolved them here at Johnson County Community College to make that easier for our students. So, um, I also attended several sessions, as I'm sure Trustee Lawson did. I know Trustee Cross is not here this evening, um, but one of the, the best sessions that I attended was, uh, conducting an effective CEO search. Um, it was put on by ACCT, who was not one of the vendors that we, uh, interviewed when we were beginning our process, but they did speak to some things that I thought were really important, and one of them, I'll just mention a couple of pieces, um, competition for candidates. Um, you mentioned earlier, Trustee Lawson, you know, that a lot of, um, colleges that are in this same situation who are looking for new presidents, so they spoke to that. And one of the things that they talked about, I thought was really interesting, it's important to think about your top choices having lots of options. So I think as we go through this procedure, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of conversations that are held, but we know for a fact, um, that the candidates have choices. So we are always going to put our best foot forward, we will find the right person for this, but it was a fascinating, um, discussion, and the onboarding process will be very important. They said that will take about 12 to 18 months. So this is a real process that are going to be able to go through with lots of opportunities. So I will end with that.
Well, thanks to both of you for, uh, participating and, uh, being on panels. Uh, that's always good to represent our college, and appreciate that very, very much. Dr. Weber, thanks for your participation, uh, on the panel. Um, and, uh, hopefully the ACCT will get everything figured out, and, uh, I know membership was an issue when I was active on the board and continues to be. Nationally, uh, they don't have the membership they'd like to have. Again, the cost is a, is a big item, I think. Foundation, Trustee Musa.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I might, you always, you always have the exact number of community colleges in America.
Oh, 1,200.
About 1,200. So if the average presidential tenure is four years, for simple math.
Yeah.
Three and a half.
Three and a half, so there are 300 vacancies at any one time, which makes it extremely important that we do put our best foot forward as a collective community, because those, as Trustee Ingram said, there are options for candidates. Um, the Foundation hosted 200 fam, members at the industrial, a career and tech ed facility on October 10th as part of the Hugh Libby Career and Tech Ed Ribbon Cutting Center ceremonies. Attendees included a number of speakers, including our Chair, Dr. Cook, Mr. Hugh Libby, who contributed significantly to the building, Stratton Bazell, who is a student in the program. Johnson County Community College Foundation President, Seuss Parker, announced a major gift from the Ronald D. Defenbough Foundation to create a new endowed scholarship for students in the CTE program, and there were a lot of campus partners that helped make that event a success, and we thank them. Uh, the Foundation hosted the 7th Annual Lace Up for Learning 5K Run Walk on Sunday, October 13th. The event raised about $6,000 for student scholarships. Uh, again, staff, students, volunteers, and community members who participated deserve our thanks. There were nearly 300 people, and a special thanks to Judy Riley and the Foundation Office for organizing, uh, that event. The Executive Committee met yesterday, um, with Ruben Brown, our auditor, who presented the Foundation's audited financials for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. The Foundation, again, received a glowing report and will, is expected to receive an unmodified or clean opinion from Ruben Brown. Uh, we wanted to especially thank Foundation Accountant, Joanne Connectney, uh, for her professionalism to produce another audit there. When we get to this, I don't, I think we approve this probably at our November meeting. We wanted to especially thank foundation accountant, Joanne Connectney, for her professionalism to produce another audit. When we get to this, I think we approved this probably at our November meeting, there was a new FASB standard, Financial Accounting Standards Board rule that required lots of work this year that Joanne had to participate in to make our audit match the current standards. A few table sponsorships still remain, and a few tables for some enchanted evening on November the 9th. That will help cap off our 50th anniversary and raise scholarship funds. Mike and Susan Lally are the co-chairs of the event. Frank Devacell is being honored as Johnson County of the Year. And as of today, I don't know if Rob is still here or not, but approximately $970,000 is the gross amount at this point, which is another record and approaching some magical number. So there's still a few tables and a few seats left. If you're interested, contact the foundation and secure your spot. This is the biggest thing we do to help students.
What was that, number nine?
970.
Thank you. That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Musil. Any questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. That's great work on the foundation. Wasn't last year a little over six total or under seven?
I think we got over seven last year, didn't we?
Wow, that's good work.
We were over eight last year. You heard that, or that was a signal to get the meeting over with? I can't, who was that?
You heard about A02 last year.
Okay.
Thanks, Kate. Next item is collegial steering. Steering committee meeting did meet at the beginning of the month. Again, that is comprised of representation from the faculty senate, faculty association, educational affairs, administration, and trustees. We really spent a lot of the time talking about Cognos, C-O-G-N-O-S. That is a software data program, a software program that really is, I think, taking place of Banner 9, but basically the scheduling for faculty and students and identifying where there are seats available and hours and really complicated. Dr. McLeod, I don't know if you want to clarify my bad description.
Yeah, Cognos is actually part of our enterprise data warehouse, and we are actually using this tool to support administrative functions inside of scheduling and understanding kind of how we can plan ahead for our scheduling as well as looking back at historical trends. That tool really has been a part of what Dr. Weber and John Clayton have been doing with their folks in terms of continuing to build out our student model so that we can start to do some predictive analytics pieces. We've been able to leverage it with some help from John Clayton's office and the folks in IR to design a way for us to utilize the Cognos information for us to do our planning and academics in a way that we used to use our old scheduling, core scheduling system. It's not to replace Banner 9. It is an adjunct to it and something that we use to do our internal work while Banner 9 is the forward-facing part of our student schedule that students use to actually achieve all of their course goals and to build their schedules out.
Well, and my sense was that from that discussion that all groups were really satisfied with the work that's being done collaboratively. And so we really felt good about that. I don't know if you have an additional comment. But again, we spent over half the time on that project. We had a presentation, so it's good teamwork. Appreciate that, John, your work, and Randy, and Dr. McLeod, Dr. Weber, and Dr. McLeod. The second item was, that we talked a little bit about, was board meeting dialogue. And we talked again about when presentations are made, particularly in the open forum, that our practice has been that we do not get in a discussion at that time of dialogue about those particular items. And a comment was made that the chair of the board, being me, the last meeting probably wasn't very sensitive to a couple of the presenters and cutting them off short and so on and so forth. And so I indicate I appreciated that information and that I will do better to be more patient. And so we meet next week, and we're going to talk a little bit about just the future of collegial steering. Again, I mentioned those five components, faculty senate, faculty association, educational affairs, administration, and trustees, because we've got five key players in the operation of the college. And I don't mean to demine or diminish the role of staff, but I think our feeling is, many of us as trustees, is that we're not many administrators. We're not here to run the college. We have a role specifically to set policy. We have a fiduciary responsibility. I'd like to say we should be advocates of the college, but we are not here to settle or solve or resolve administrative issues with faculty, staff. And so that has to come through our committees in our process. But we had a good discussion about it, and as chair, I will be more patient and understanding during the open forum session when people have comments to make. Anyway, good discussion. And as I say, our next collegial steering will be next Tuesday. Human resources, trustee Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the HR committee this month because I was ill. I have not received the full presentations from this meeting, so I will let trustee Musil handle since he was present during that committee. But I also wanted to find out the schedule because I don't have a calendar for the next HR meetings for November, December, or January. I do see in an email that I received that there might be a meeting in November and February. So I just wanted to find out, are we planning to skip the winter meetings or do we have a, because this calendar that we received doesn't have HR on here. But I, so I'm getting conflicting messages. So would there be an opportunity?
Becky, is HR meeting in December, I think is the question.
December 6th.
And November meeting is usually the same time?
We don't have one in November.
You don't have one in November, but you have one December 6th.
Okay. Thank you. So I'll turn over the time to trustee Musil. Thank you.
Thank you. The human resources committee met at 8:00 on October 4th. Number of normal people present, we have the same people as usual. I don't know if, they're all normal. Becky was there and presented an update on non-exempt salary study. We have three classifications of employees, exempt, non-exempt, and faculty. We do a salary study of one of those each year, so it's a three-year rotation. And this year, it will be the non-exempt salary study, so non-exempt personnel, a study of the compensation package for those folks. HR technology support, Becky gave us an update on the new application tracking system called PageUp, which will roll out in January and help everyone better track, get applications online, track responses, do interviews, keep records. We're very excited about that. Karen Marley, vice president, continuing ed, reported on the Living as Leader program, which we have funded for the last two years. Last year, two cohorts of a total of 52 people went through the training. And group three, the third cohort, a group of 20 people, has started this fall. So we're continuing to review that and as we get farther out, be able to measure the success of that. Jerry Zimmerman reviewed the results of the annual nondiscrimination testing for the healthcare FSA and dependent care FSA. That's nondiscrimination testing based on compensation levels and highly compensated employees. And reported one employee needed to be adjusted in order to make, meet the federal requirements. Colleen Chandler discussed the mandatory training overview. Every employee is required to do this annually. It identifies nondiscrimination, anti-harassment training, technology, security, and campus safety awareness training. And there was a discussion about when that should be required to be completed by various categories of employees on campus. Ms. Chandler also reviewed the exit interviews for employees that we do quarterly and reported on the calendar year 2019, quarter two. And we also do stay interviews of people after they've been on campus for six months? Six months, so there's a report on that. She reported that there will be upcoming annual supervisor evaluations and staff performance evaluation process. It's an annual process. And finally, John Clayton, executive director of Institutional Effectiveness, presented a draft, rough model, I don't know how you describe it, John, of the future liability of the voluntary employee retirement benefit or VERB program. A number of assumptions need to go into a model like that to identify who has so many years of service, how many years of service will they have four years from now, how many might retire during that period of time, how many might have a certain amount of paid administrative leave that they would be able to cash out or put into their HSA. But it gave us an idea. If you recall, when we adopted the VERB program, we anticipated a $5.8 million reserve amount out of our reserves that would be committed, could not be spent for anything else. That fairly rapidly went to 6.3 million. And so we're trying to project that in the future so that everybody understands the fiscal impact of this program. And if the next meeting is December 6th, then we're good to go. That's my, and my report.
Thank you.
Questions of trustee Musil or trustee Lawson? Thank you. Learning quality, trustee Snyder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The learning quality committee met on Monday, October 7th at 8:30 in this room. Minutes of the meeting are in the packet. The committee received a sabbatical update that focused on mental health concerns and suicide prevention and bringing all the disparate kind of resources that are available to people, but getting them corralled into a usable format here on campus so we can spread that message and also coordinate with other school districts and other enterprises. Dr. McLeod provided information on course transfers and highlighted some of the successes and challenges we've had, trying to make sure that when students take courses here, they're useful in their future degree pursuits. And then Dr. McLeod also provided an overview of how our community advisory committees function and how they are set up. That was all useful information. I have no recommendations this month, but there are a couple affiliation and other agreements in the consent agenda, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of trustee Snyder? Management, trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, October 7th in the boardroom. The information related to the management committee meeting begins on page nine and runs through page 21 of the board packet. The management committee received several presentations from staff. Rob Wirick, director of JCCC Foundation, provided the annual report on the foundation. He reported total revenue was 7.3 million and expenses were 11.9 million for fiscal year 2019. The expenses and excess revenue is common when a major gift is being spent down. Of the total, scholarships, which are distributed by JCCC's financial aid department, represented over $1.2 million. This was an all-time high in scholarships awarded. The foundation's endowment fund finished the year above $22 million, and total assets reached $39.9 million as of June 30th, 2019. Barbara Larson, executive vice president for finance and administrative services, presented information on two agreements with outside agencies. These agreements can be found in the consent agenda on pages 44 and 45 of the board packet. Karen Martley, vice president, continuing education and organizational development, provided a brief update about the current status of employee engagement at JCCC. She reported the listening sessions were completed in August. There have been follow-up calls with the vendor in September with suggestions on next steps. Rachel Leers, associate vice president, financial services CFO, presented information on the preliminary budget calendar and preliminary budget guidelines for fiscal year 2021. Recommendations for approval of the calendar and guidelines will be brought forward to the management committee at the December 4th, 2019 meeting. For the technology information quarterly report, Ziggy Jarsek, IT asset and vulnerability manager, presented an update on IT management and security. He described how asset management includes equipment tracking, reporting, and finally disposal once the asset reaches the end of life. Vulnerability management is used in protecting assets and includes steps to identify, classify, prioritize, and remediate. This report can be found on pages 16 to 19 in the board packet. Janelle Bogler, associate vice president for business services, presented the single-source purchase report. In Rex Hay's absence, Dr. Barbara Larson, executive vice president, finance and administrative services, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and this report is on page 14 of the packet. She also provided information on current progress of the construction projects on campus. She then reviewed the report on the financial status of facilities, master plan projects. That report is in your packet on page 15. The management committee has a number of recommendations to present this evening. The first two recommendations this evening refer to the issuance of student commons and parking system refunding revenue bonds, Series 2019. Earlier today, working with Mr. Bill Henderson from Piper Jaffray, the college's financial advisor, the college accepted bids for this refinancing. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Henderson to the podium to inform the board about today's proceeding. Mr. Henderson. Good evening.
So you can see the, oh, there's a slide. Okay, great. So today's the culmination of a process that began in August. And as mentioned, we held a competitive sale today at 10:00 for approximately $8.6 million of the college's student commons and parking system refunding revenue bonds, undertaking the financing for debt service savings. The bonds are rated AA+, which was a reaffirmation of the college's previous rating. In the report, Standard and Poor's noted the college's positive financial operations, manageable debt, and good revenue diversity. So very good outcome from firm Standard and Poor's. Keeping in mind that the community college's general obligation bond rating is AAA because these are revenue bonds and only payable from revenues of the college versus full faith and credit of the tax base, these are one notch below. But AA+ is a very high rating for a revenue bond. Obviously, rates are still continuing to be low, so it's a great time to sell the bonds. In fact, rates are lower today than when we started the process in August. So it's a good feeling to get into the market. And that's despite a large amount of supply because the number of governmental entities right now are accessing the capital markets. So despite that large volume of new municipal bonds being issued, our rates were still more favorable than what we projected in August. Eight bids were received, so quite a bit of interest in the college's bond issue. Robert W. Baird was a successful bidder, all in cost of capital for an eight-year bond issue of 1.5%. So outstanding outcome. And with that, obviously, the savings are significant. We looked at gross savings over the next eight years of $1.15 million approximately, about $142,000 a year. So by all measures, a very successful sale today. Now, page two of the brief presentation here, this is a listing of all the bids that we received and the firms that submitted bids. And you can see top to bottom, the successful bid at 1.5%, and the last-place bid was at 1.67%. But for the most part, the first four bids were very tightly grouped there in the 1.5% range. So very good outcome today, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
The, I suppose that one of the easy points to make is that companies are eager to bid these based on the financial condition of the organization. And you mentioned our AAA rating, and we've been blessed to have good financial footing. But what other factors? It seems to me that not just the financial position, but the steps an organization has, the processes that organization has to get there. Could you talk about that in regard to the college? My feeling is that we have a lot of good people doing a lot of good things.
Right.
And so I'm curious to see what your viewpoint of that is.
Well, I mean, I think it's almost the reverse of that. The rating is indicative of all the steps that have gone into place. It's, for a revenue bond to be AA+, obviously, a lot of good decisions have been made along the lines in terms of managing the finances as well as managing fund balances, et cetera, and not getting too leveraged, right? So, you know, the college is not over-leveraged. The college has adequate financial reserves, and the college's revenues each year exceed expenditures. So, I mean, all those are the key components, and it's got a long track record of doing so. Because oftentimes, sometimes some credits will slip back, and it takes a long time to get credibility, again, in the financial markets or from the rating agencies. So the AA+ is something that has been earned over time and then needs to be maintained over time. And so that's kind of the, the rating is kind of the outcome of all those good decisions.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I think, I don't know if everybody received it, but I received an email today, a query from a constituent that said, why don't we just pay those off? What would it cost if we wanted to pay those bonds, that debt, off today? Is it the 8.2 million?
The 8.5, yeah. 8.6 roughly.
8.5 million.
Right.
And by refinancing it at 1.5%, we're saving over $1 million gross at net present value.
Right, right. Okay. And to be fair, I mean, well, there's a lot goes into that decision, right? I mean, one, the college can earn probably above 1.5% on its investments right now without going out too far in government bonds. You know, for example, I think the 90-day treasury bill's around 1.6%. So it'd be very easy just to be able to, at that level, be able to, you know, earn as much as what the debt is costing you. But, you know, this debt was originally issued in 2002 to build a very long-lived asset, parking facilities. And so it seems reasonable that that, with a long-lived asset, that you would pay that back over time, not unlike most people, most companies. back over time, not unlike most people, most companies and most individuals pay for, you know, large capital expenditures. So while, yes, you could pay the debt off, it just seems that it's probably a more common fact to, or a common method is to pay large capital expenditures back over time.
Is it a fair statement that our AAA bond rating and our AA+ on a revenue bond has something to do with the fact that we have sufficient financial reserves that we have protected as a board?
Right. There's no question that the reserves of the college are a big part of the rating process, and that's noted, you know, it's noted, obviously, in the rating reports that the college receives.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my point is simply this: We have a lot of people that are willing to spend our reserves right now for some program. Those are one-time expenditures you don't get back. We've built them up. We know we have science labs to pay for coming up and other things. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, yeah, just pay those off and don't pay 1.5% and spend $8.5 million now out of your reserves that's gone. So I think it's a very prudent thing. I thank you for your help and for identifying places where we can save, go from 3% to 1.5% is a great saving. So thank you.
Well, particularly if we can use those reserves to invest at anything above 1.5.
And the other thing I will say about reserves, because, I mean, obviously, work with governmental entities, you know, numerous governmental entities, and one thing I always, and also not-for-profits, too, which have reserves as well. Reserves, obviously, keep you from having to borrow in the future. You have ongoing capital at this college every single year, and the reserves often can be used to fund those improvements. So while you may decide to use reserves to pay this particular piece of debt off, what you may end up doing is incurring debt at a less favorable time to fund other capital. So it gives you a lot of flexibility, and you make a good point that once you spend it, it's gone. And it doesn't, it has to either come back through tuition or taxes or state aid or whatever it would be to build those reserves back up. But inevitably, what we see, and I could, you know, make a point, many clients that have done this over time, where they've spent reserves to pay debt only to have to borrow more money later on. And I think most find that it's not usually typically a good decision, that you're better off just to pay it back over time.
Doctor Sopich.
So, Bill, what do you see the rates doing in the future?
I don't know. I'll tell you what, I joked with Rachel today about the bid is, you know, the longest, I think the longest maturity yielded approximately 1.6%, meaning if you're an investor, you're locking your money up for, till, at 1.6% for eight years. Now intuitively, that doesn't feel real good, but if you went to a period of negative interest rates, that's going to be the best investment ever made. So I don't know. I really don't know which side of the argument tend up on that one.
So if we go negative interest rates, does that help us?
Yeah, it'll help you because you'll be refinancing your debt at negative interest rates. But I'm not sure that, we'll probably see property valuations going down and a whole lot of other stuff going on.
Which is happening in Europe at this time.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So.
Okay, Trustee Lawson.
Just, so clarification, the purpose of bonds are really so not one generation pays the debt. It's for multiple generations over time to be able to pay in the skin of the game, so to speak. Is that correct?
Right, that's one, that's one argument for long-term debt is that you repay it back over time so that, you know, the asset's long-lived. Everybody's going to enjoy it for a long period of time. So if you think about the parking garage being built in '02, you know, the students are long-gone that paid fees and things, or taxpayers might be have moved out of Johnson County who might have provided revenue to pay that debt. So it's just to take assets and extend it over the period of time while people are still using them.
Correct. Thank you.
Ready for the motion?
Yes, if there are no more questions, I would like to proceed. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve awarding the sale of the Series 2019 Student Commons and Parking System Refunding Revenue Bonds with principal amount of approximately $8,565,000 to Robert W. Baird and Company, and I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Oh, you're there. I'm, good. Trustee Cross is on the phone.
I was late, I'm sorry, but I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and in follow-up, it is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to adopt the final resolution authorizing the issuance and delivery of the Series 2019 Student Commons and Parking System Refunding Revenue Bonds with a principal amount of approximately $8,565,000, and I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
There was one recommendation based on a request for proposals. This was an RFP for the renewal of an annual contract for media management system. It is the recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the new contract award to Uja Inc. for a campus-wide media management system for a current-year amount of $31,500 and an estimated amount of $126,000 for all optional renewals through 2024, for a total estimated five-year amount of $157,500, and I will make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and that concludes the management report.
Rex Hayes, I'm going to put you on the spot in the back of the room. You have a guest with you, and would you introduce Tom to the group, please?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Tom Hall, and he's my replacement. He comes to us from Los Angeles Community College Systems. So he's, that system has over 250,000 students and nine campuses. So I think we're in good hands.
Well, I'm pleased, Tom, to have you, and I'm pleased to see your smile. I think I can understand why you're smiling. I'm not sure why Rex is smiling, but I think we can figure that out. And when's your last day, Rex?
The end of December.
Okay. But anyway, welcome, and thanks for joining us, and Trustee Musall.
He can't replace you, he can succeed you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thanks for the good work we've had, successful ribbon-cutting at the Libby Kerr &amp; Tech, the Student Center, FADS, and work is still going on, so thank you very much. President's Recommendations, Treasurer's Report, Trustee Musall.
Mr. Chairman, the Treasurer's Report for the month ended August 31st, 2019, starts at page 22. Pages 22 through 33 of the board packet. Page one is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. August was the second month of our fiscal year. We received state operating grant payments of $11 million in August, and those are recorded in the Technical Education Fund. We received $5.1 million from Johnson County of Advalore and Property Tax revenues in September, and those will be reflected in next month's report. The unencumbered cash balance as of 8/31/19 was $96 million, which is approximately $14 million in the same time last year, and expenditures in the primary operating funds were all within approved budgetary limits. With that is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended August 31st, 2019, subject to audit, and I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything else, Trustee Musall?
Nothing else.
President's Report, Monthly Report to the Board, Doctor Sopich.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I know there are many of us who would like to spend the evening trick-or-treating and being out and about with our families, so in deference to that, this will be very brief. First of all, for the Board, you've, you have the monthly report, and when you picked this up, the first sentence is about our Continuing Education Division receiving a 12-month grant totaling $67,000 for vice scholarships for 15 veterans or their families for CDL. Karen, this is terrific. I know you worked with Melinda in the grants office to make this happen, but on behalf of all those vets, I'd like to thank you for your efforts on this. Throughout these pages, there are wonderful things. I hope you get the chance to review them, accomplishments and all the good work that's going on on campus. It's very exciting. The Board, in front of you, you have the 33rd Student Art Competition booklet. This is from the League for Innovation. It, in there are, I guess, students from every single league school who have submitted works of art. I'd like to recognize Mark Cowardon. He's our professor of fine arts. Also, I think the chair of that department did a marvelous job orchestrating this and bringing it together. Also, this was printed on our campus, and I believe we designed it as well. So thank you all the way around. Most importantly, would like to recognize Leon Jones. He's one of our students who earned a second-place award here for his sculpture, "At Rest." It is on page 130 and 131, if you would like to see it. So, Mr. Chair, that wraps up the report for this evening. Thank you.
I think you have one other comment you do not want to make about...
I was going to wait.
Are you going to wait? Okay. Didn't want to miss out. We'll wait. By the way, if you look at that report, there's 36 pages, and I was impressed with the number of activities that students have for counseling, for additional help. There's example after example, and the numbers are increasing in terms of going to our collab areas, our centers, and I really appreciate what faculty and staff are doing to help students find success. Another item was, we had the Once Upon an Artifact, and we had about 12 faculty that took their message to the Johnson County Museum. And I'm one that believes the more we can go outside the bounds of this campus to inform our community of the great talent we have here, the better we tell the story of Johnson County Community College. Over 100 attendees sat in on that session, and that was very, very impressive. Some of you are involved with the intercultural retreat, and were 25 international students. I won't name names, but it sounds, looks like you had a great time. And then in the Small Business Development Center, we had 150 people from over 10 states on campus, and again, another example of bringing a lot of people on campus. So take a look at those pages. When I talk about trustees being advocates for the college, you have a handful, you've got pages of information that you can utilize to tell the good story of the college out in the community, and I would encourage you to do so. We have two old business items between now and trick-or-treating, and one is the Promise Update. We had tabled that from our previous meeting. We asked Dr. Weber to bring in some additional information. So, Dr. Weber, if you would proceed.
You bet. I'm up here tonight, as requested by you guys, to discuss a little bit more the exploration of a promise-type program at JCC. I'm going to apologize in advance to our folks in the audience. I'm going to move through this somewhat swiftly because much of what we have is a review of information previously presented with some further analysis, and I'll take a little bit more time on that further analysis, and this came as a request from our board retreat in August. So with that said, I'll start with our mission. Obviously, as we think about initiatives at the college, we're trying to figure out how we're inspiring learning to transform lives, strengthen community. As we've looked at the concept of a promise program, what we wanted to do was say, we wanted to impact a college-growing culture. We wanted to make sure that JCC serves as a first-choice institution to Johnson County High School graduates, and we want to make sure that our students are workforce-ready. These are the types of things we would do consistent with efforts to achieve our mission with any kind of programming. The discussion around the concept has discussed readily what kind of eligibility requirements would be for students coming from high school. The requirements that have been discussed are that they be a Johnson County resident who are degree or certificate-seeking, first time and full-time in college, directly matriculating right out of high school. That means they enroll in college their first semester out of high school, that they're federal financial aid-eligible, and they earn at least a 2.5 GPA in their first seven high school semesters. Additionally, for those students, we discussed that for their continued eligibility in the program after initial award, that we would want them to continue to maintain 2.5 GPA and full-time status. We've discussed that, as well as complete their JCC Pathways Program, and that's the biggest engagement issue that a student would need to have while they're here, along with completing 2/3 of their attempted hours. These are things we've discussed previously. These are the numbers that we discussed, saying what kind of our total enrollment, how would that impact credit hours that students take? So on the far left here, I'm going to go with the blue for the sake of simplicity. What you see in our analysis year, which would have been students who started in the fall of 1516, so we could track their 150% through the program, we have 20,187 students enrolled that fall. As you go through being a resident, that who are degree-seeking, also first-time college in full-time, we end up with 675 students taking 16,977 credit hours. We needed that math to build a projection. Based on that projection, what we end up with, there's two columns here on the left, which would be a year-one cost, along with a year-two cost. This was the initial projection that was discussed based on the criteria. 675 students taking almost 17,000 credit hours counts as a tuition and fees gross of $1.54 million. The program that we've discussed over time has been what we call a last dollar, and a last dollar means that a student's federal financial aid and institutional scholarship would count first. Given that those would count first, then the program cost would be the remaining tuition and fees for those 675 students. In this model, what it shows is a first-year cost of approximately $700,000, so $695,000. We project that cohort forward for their first-year retention, along with the new year. We have a two-year model cost of about $1.264 million. Now, again, that counts the retention and the first-time freshmen moving forward. Some projections, as this model's been rolled out through the rest of the country, show the anticipation of, you could anticipate an increase of maybe up to 20%. That would be high. But many of the models across the country point out that the higher participation rates predominantly are students who are federal aid-eligible, so it would not cost the program. So that's how the projection was built there. From there, what we did is we discussed and said, what would happen if we took students and didn't say every student in the county was eligible? If we started to say, how would it be need-based? And if we were to do need-based, the cleanest, simplest way to do this is to use what we call an EFC, which is an Expected Family Contribution. It's a number that's calculated by a family completing their FAFSA. Unfortunately, it's a pretty complex calculation, so I won't go through it tonight. But a student's EFC is built, and then they have a score, and that score uses, based on what we call a Calculated Cost of Attendance. And we've talked about and referred to the cost of attendance for students, and that's why we have this up here tonight, a number of times through this conversation. And what this points out is that for a student to attend JCC, it costs much more than their cost of tuition and fees. There's the books and supplies, loan fees, room and board, transportation, all those things that calculate, and a lot of different students have different scales, so the one that was used here is what's in blue, and that's our Johnson County resident student living, enrolled in 15 hours and living at home. That would be the intended student for this. So, for example, if we had an adult student with a couple kids not living at home, then their cost of attendance would be much higher. They would have childcare factored in there. Their room and board would be significantly higher. Trustee Musall.
Living at home, but $2,500 of room and board, is that contribution to the household? How's that calculated?
So, room and board, part of that is food, so when they eat out and that. So this is a federal calculation that each school gets to, uses and builds on their own. There's criteria to be able to build this. Our financial aid office builds this to determine what a student's need is. But a lot of that is rare, there may be examples of students who pay rent to live at home, but often it's the eating out that students tend to do at 18, 19, 20 years old that factor into it. So as you can see on this, what happens is, we build for this model, a cost of attendance at JCC, that's $16,796. Our average estimated family contribution for students is $14,000, which would mean that the average student in this capacity has an unmet need of $2,796. I'll tell you, many, many families tell us whenever we come up with an EFC form, it's like, yeah, right, we don't have that kind of money to pay for college. But that's the federal model that we're working under. So that, to point out there, all the costs that are factored into a cost of attendance for college. So from there, what we did was we said, what were the things with the existing programs and scenarios that were built on need-based? But it was worth pointing out at the front end, we do have an existing program today. It's called the CAB Guarantee, and the CAB Guarantee really came to fruition. Our recruiters were out frequently at our local high schools and said, you know, when we go and talk to seniors in high school, they say, well, what can you do for me if I've got good academics? KU or K-State or Washburn or whomever says they're going to give me $1,000 if I have a 3.0, no questions asked. And so we didn't really have anything that said, well, yes. And additionally... And additionally, we were struggling to get high school seniors to do their FAFSA and their scholarship application for the foundation in a timely manner. So, we coupled that, well, we'll give you some form of a guarantee so long as you fill out your scholarship app early. And what we currently have is $500, and I'll show you some of the numbers on it, and again, it is for this criteria. First-time, full-time students who are federal aid-eligible. These students have a 3.5 high school GPA, because again, this was based on a request for merit-type scholarship, obtain satisfactory academic progress in the fall to get their spring money, and in this case, they would get $250 each semester. And like what we talked about with the PRIMUS type program, it would not be stackable with others. What that looks like numbers-wise, we've had an ebb and a flow on this. It's been really kind of interesting. So, you can see in chronological order from most recent year or this current year, at the top down to the bottom, we, our first year was 1617, we were only able to award 41 students. That didn't mean only 41 students applied. A number of students who applied received foundation scholarship because they met other criteria. So, this is kind of that carrot-to-dangle, and this is supported through a combination of fees and foundation monies. This year two, we got a really good cohort of 105 awarded to it, and then years three and four, you can kind of see where we projected.
Randy, what's behind the ebb and flow of that?
So, there's a little bit of, we had more applicants, but the applicants met foundation scholarships. So, some of the foundation scholarships, they matched better with some of the foundation monies those last couple of years. We still struggle with getting students to do things on the timeline. That's the biggest issue. And that's probably not a surprise, but there is that whole get your app in on a timely date. So, then what we did is, we said, well, what would a need-based program? We didn't say include everybody in the program. So, again, we referenced the program that had 675 students. So, all the columns on the left up to the last are what are the same. So, the white numbers on the right represent students with an EFC of $18,000 or lower. And so, that is 400 students taking 9,965 credit hours. So, these would be students who demonstrate a level of need just at our cost of attendance or just above it. Here's the numbers again for that. So, what the model would look like for that, the cost-wise, is if we project that forward, those students would have a gross tuition and fees of $906,000. 55% of that's just at a half-million dollars. So, a year-one cost for this cohort would be $408,000. Two-year cost, approximately $656,000 for the cohort. Then we took scenario two and said, scenario two is, what if we lowered the EFC to $14,000? And what that did is generated 366 students taking only $9,100 credit hours. Put that math forward, and I've got a summative slide here to help everybody with it. It starts to show a cost of $373,000 for the program year one, $600,000 year two. Lastly, what we did was, again, I discussed that those were last-dollar programs, meaning that these are the students whose Pell would pay first. And so, if we said we truly did a need-based program, what would happen is, this would be first dollar. So, these students would get their tuition and fees covered so that their Pell, so that their foundation scholarship could cover those other things that fall into a cost of attendance. That math, of course, for 14,000 or less, produced the same 366 students, but what you see different in the analytics or the roll-up is, we're not reducing 55% for their Pell and their foundation. So, that leaves a program cost of $829,000 year one, $1.3 million year two. So, as we roll all that up, this is a summative slide to kind of show the CABG Guarantee, which is our existing program, students impacted by it this year, the previously discussed option, which is about 675, which should include no income limit, but it is last dollar, and then a couple different last-dollar scenarios followed by a first dollar. As we've discussed all this, some of the things that we've talked about are some of the uncertainties that exist locally, and we've talked about these in August, and we still believe they hold true today, which are the commercial tax appeal, also known as dark store theory, the state grant program that has been discussed, that the state's looking at doing a need-based program for the first time. They've not really fleshed out who that includes or what the limits of that may be. And then, thirdly, the discussion around the transitions at the college and the prioritization and, you know, programs like this fitting into the strategic plan or the ongoing agenda. And with that said, I concluded my presentation, and welcome any comments.
Randy, and it seems like the college has other support programs as well to help students. Do we not have a whole series of events to help, a whole series of activities to help students that aren't listed here?
We have a lot of things that aren't listed here. I think you heard our Faculty Association President, Dr. Harvey, talk a little bit earlier about the Student Emergency Fund. That's managed through the foundation, and our counselors award that and do a lot of fundraising for that. We have a Dean of Students' Support Fund. We've had a food pantry on campus that's grown a little bit through an initiative that we recently, the board approved last year as part of our budget process. The addition of a position we're really excited about is called Student Basic Needs Coordinator. And so, what we've done is, we said, what are the basic needs that our students have? And how can we coordinate the efforts to do this? So, the food pantry has migrated over to there with the intent that we know students who have food insecurity also have transportation issues, a number of housing issues, another, a number of other things. So, how do we centralize those communications and strategies that are there? So, we've added that position. We're adding support for the food pantry. This year, we were able to, and we're excited to have added the U-PASS program, which allows students to ride the transit for free using their student ID card. That includes the micro-transit, which has been a hit. We see those vans on campus all the time. So, we tried to address some of those other cost of attendance, things like transportation and emergency funds and that through other college strategies.
I didn't mean to get into the long list, but we do have a long list of those.
Yeah, that was just a piece of them.
Trustee Snyder.
Thank you for the update on this. Remind me, when you need a vote on something so that you can get something in place for next year?
The only way, and our team would still be pulling their hair out, but they pull their hair out with, I think, the ability to do it, for fall of '20 would be if we have an approved program by next November is what we've been saying, excuse me, this November. So, the next board meeting, it would be the case where we would, if we don't have a decision by the November board meeting, there's no way we could communicate, build, roll out, and successfully do a fall program.
Okay. And I think as I communicate, I have less concern about the cost and more concern that it's targeted to the right population of students. I think this gets me a little closer, but I have a lot of questions about how we got to this that I'm not inclined to want to ask tonight because of time constraints. So, I will just visit with you offline at some point and learn more about it.
Thank you. Trustee Ingram.
Well, the one question that I had, and you mentioned the number of positions open and restructuring. I mean, you're a part of that. Speak to that.
The transition at the college. So, it's not so much the positions. I think, you know, at the retreat, the question was asked, what is the recommendation of the administration? At that time, we said our recommendation would be to table it. And I say that that recommendation still stands. This type of program is one that is a very hot topic in a community. And what we want to make sure is that we're all on board, that this is a top priority that clearly aligns with how we're trying to meet the community and workforce needs. And I think what we've demonstrated is, it's a program we can do, but we've struggled to be able to continue to land on, it's the program we should do. And I think that the reason our recommendation would be to table it is to make sure that as we clearly have a strategic plan and an agenda that says, this is what we want to accomplish, this strategy fits right into it, so it's easier to explain how that direct connection exists. And so, I think that's been our struggle, is the can versus should. And we worked through the can, and now it's that should component.
Trustee Musso. Simple question first. 2.5 high school GPA over seven semesters, that's an average over seven semesters? It's not a 2.5 average?
Yeah.
And don't we still have high schools that have a ninth grade? Is that, it's just, it's ninth grade, nine through 12, right? Not with their, some of the middle schools still six through nine or seven through nine? So...
Some places.
Some places.
I don't know that in Johnson County, we have any middle schools that include ninth grade. I know that more common is either six through eight or seven and eight.
Okay. One of the concerns I still have is, I mean, I like the program, I really like what you've done, is how you cap it. I mean, if we go into a situation like in 2010, 11, 12, where our enrollment is up 20%, and property values are flat or down, and we have this in place, it becomes very difficult to kind of pick and choose first-come, first-served or whatever. So, it's an issue that I think we need to think about ahead of time, if and really when we implement something like this. The other thing is, on year two, it looked like you had about 50% more cost.
Yeah.
Because you've got the same students that are now in their second year, and you've got half of that amount coming in their first year. The third year, it's going to be double.
Well, no, because part of the design here is that they have four, they need to be progressing toward a degree or certificate. So, your program eligibility would be two years.
Oh, okay. And then what, in talking to the community that you did, are high school principals, superintendents, career counselors, is this their first choice for these students that we're really trying to reach that are first-generation and maybe don't have a history of a college? They don't think about going to college, and we're trying to make sure they know that they can do that. Because I, you know, I've said before, I don't think tuition is the biggest thing keeping students from coming to Johnson County Community College. I think it's transportation. I think it's childcare. I think it's two jobs. So, are there other higher-level, did we try to flesh that out? I mean, the micro-transit's a great opportunity, and I don't know what it costs. I think it's $1.50.
It's $1.50 a ride, yeah.
So, $1.50 into $600,000, we could give a whole bunch of rides to students that get here. And I know it's a limited part of the county. It's not county-wide yet, but I'm trying to, again, prioritize those needs to make sure we meet the ones that will get the student here. I understand they also talked about helping with College Now students who are in high school, can't afford, can't afford the tuition to take the class for college credit. Maybe they're an A-plus student, but they can't afford to take the class for college credit, and we could help them, and then all of a sudden, they would be tied into Johnson County Community College and college generally.
That would be, that would be a different strategy. I'll tell you a quick win we got out of this. As part of discussing this program concept in a community conversation, we talked about that barrier and that need for College Now or dual-credit students. And one of the community members in attendance felt compelled and has already started issuing scholarship money for students in one of our local school districts. So, we have dual-credit students, just as part of that conversation, that would have never happened otherwise.
Well, this is, I liked the information we've seen for the first time tonight. I don't know for sure where we go from here, because I think the transitions and the uncertainties are important, but much more comfortable with targeting it to students with some type of need. Dr. Sobchak.
First of all, I'd like to compliment Dr. Weber, Rachel Lear. So many people have put a lot of time and effort into this, and these discussions have been going on now for at least a year. And how many renditions have we had of these?
Quick cabinet while back.
Right. So, and that's terrific, because I think one of the issues is whether or not they can actually execute the program. And there is no doubt they can execute the program. They're very good. The scope of the program is significant. This isn't simply putting brochures on a table. This is going to require an intense effort, I believe, not just at the high school level, but the middle school level as well, as far as getting families that do not have a college-going culture within their, in their background to do this. This is a wonderful program, and I believe it's much-needed. But I also believe that this is a one-shot deal. And if we go out there and for a variety of reasons, maybe don't pull it off as smoothly as we can, it's going to make it a little more challenging in the future to do something of this scope. The transitions that Trustee Ingram brought up are pretty fundamental to the school. You're talking about transitions at the very top, around this table at the board level. There are governance discussions going on here, which are super-intense and very fundamental to the future of this college. You're going to be hiring a new president, which is significant, and that new president's going to do a strategic plan. And how will this fit into that strategic plan? So, it's, we can get it done, but if you want to mitigate risk, you look at everything involved, to get it done, it has to be perfect. And I know Randy's team could do that, but maybe, maybe now is not the best time. Maybe the opportunity to just look ahead down the road and launch it could be, could be better. So, that's why we recommended now, I guess on two occasions, to table this program.
Thank you. Trustee Lawson, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Trustee Cross, do you have any comments? Trustee Cross, are you there?
Yes, I had a, I'm sorry, I had a mute, Mr. Chair. I can understand and appreciate that, and I appreciate Dr. Sobchak's comments. I couldn't hear everything Randy said, but I heard those things, everything that trustee said. My preference would be to go on this, but if the administration thinks it's better that we wait to roll it out, I'm fine with that. I mean, I think that makes sense, because if you play it wrong, you don't go wrong. So, I'm, I'll go with the administration on this.
Thank you. You know, I guess my concern is that we heard our lawn person say, there are a lot of, lot of strategies in place, and a lot of people, the college has always had a reputation of doing it right. And like you, Trustee Snyder, I hear what you're saying. There are a lot of questions. Trustee Cross, I agree with you that if we're going to do this, let's do it right. We have a lot of transition going on, and my, I guess if we take this to a vote tonight, I would vote to table it until at least next spring and more realistically target the '21-'22 year, at the fall of '21 rather than the fall of '20. That would give us the college and new staff, new leadership, a chance to get their arms around it better. So, that's my position right now, is to support the administration and table this until into the spring. I don't know if we need a motion on that or if we just need an understanding that we'll table it.
I think you just don't vote. It just dies for a lack of a motion.
And we'll, I think this is really good information, and I also understand Dr. Sobchak's point that a lot of people put a lot of time into this. These things just don't pop up because you Google it. So, a lot of people put in a lot of time, and we appreciate that. So, we've got additional information to consider.
Mr. Chair.
Just a minute, Trustee Cross. So, I think to look at this information and as trustees to also visit in the community with our different constituencies about this project, because it's a big deal and we want to do it right. Trustee Cross.
So moved.
Are you in costume?
Want to make you laugh too?
Are you, are you in costume yet? Are you out trick-or-treating or are you?
No, we're getting them dressed up. Thank you for it.
Well, I don't think we need to vote on it then if we understand that we'll table this till spring, at least later in, or next April or May or sometime. We're not in a hurry to do this for the fall of '20. Okay?
I appreciate that, and if I, in closing, in public, I appreciate, we had a lot of staff who worked really hard in building these analyses, making sure that our projections were right, preparing for how we communicated. So, that includes everybody in our IR, our admissions and recruitment, our financial aid, our budget office, and a number of people I'm not thinking of right now, but I appreciate the efforts of each of them in getting that work done.
Thanks, Dr. Weber. Appreciate it. We'll move on. The next old-business item is the Presidential Search. Dr. Harvey gave a nice recap in her comments about the search committee. Draw your attention to page 34 in your packet, and just as a very, very quick review, AGB was here October 9th through the 11th and held 15 on-campus listening sessions. As a result of those listening sessions, then they came up with a draft of the Leadership Advertisement Marketing Piece. Now, keep in mind, this is the piece we want to put out in publications to advertise the position, to begin to receive resumes. I would also point out that along with this, on the presidential website of the college is a lot of other information regarding the college that candidates will look at. college is a lot of other information regarding the college that candidates will look at. So I would encourage you to go to that presidential website and, and see for yourself all of the really good information. I think Karen, you've had a part in that. Becky, you've certainly had a part in that. A lot of people have had, played Chris Gray, a lot of information about our college to market and position it. The piece that we would like you to vote upon tonight is the ad that will go in publication so we can begin to officially launch the search. We, we then got that draft on the 15th. I think we sent out to you a copy of that draft as well as it went online. And we invited people to solicit information on an online survey from October 11th through October 20th. And as Dr. Harvey indicated, we also had another, the, the search committee requested a listening session on October 21st here on campus. And we had 170 different responses through that survey and through the listening session. And I, I do believe, I agree with Dr. Harvey that we captured a lot of that input into the new draft. And that new draft is before you. The search committee, by the way, met on October 24th and went through the responses that we received, prioritized the attributes, which was a good discussion in terms of academic background by the president. And then also we thought it was important to put student outcomes up near the top. But we, we've tried to condense those bullet points to deal with a lot of issues that would, would enhance the opportunity to get good, good applicants to meet the needs of this college. The urgency for tonight to approve the, the, the draft that you have before you is to meet some publication deadlines which start next week. And the key one is the Chronicle of Higher Ed that we wanted to get an ad in, and that deadline is November 5. What will happen from the timeline then is that as these ads get placed, resumes will begin to come in in November and December. And we've established a deadline of January 15th for resumes to come in. Search committee will come back together at the end of January. They will be receiving these resumes to review. And then they will bring to this board a final number. I think one thing we should think about that I'd like your input on is do you want three finalists? Do you want four finalists? Will, the search committee will, with, with the search committee, will try and get the number down to 10 or 12. That, and that'll be a search committee process. So with that, we, we have a timeline that I think we can meet very well. We want to get this out so candidates can begin to think about this job and provide their resumes in November and December. And has been said by trustee Lawson and implied by trustee Ingram, and I think trustee Musil, there are a lot of colleges looking for presidents. And the competition will be tough. So we want to, we want to be in the forefront. And McCormick and Fitzgerald, our two consultants with AGB, think our timeline is right on target. So we would ask you, and I guess before discussion, we put the recommendation on the table, I'll ask trustee Ingram to make, make the motion.
It is the recommendation of the board chair and the search committee that the board approved the presidential profile as presented in the board packet. I so moved.
And that packet, that, that is on an attachment to your board, your board information?
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Musil.
I'm not going to try to edit this. I think it's an excellent document. I'm going to mention a couple of things because I think candidates are going to look at board meeting video before they, before they apply perhaps. I was, I would have added something about the, the Johnson County commitment to public education, K-12 and enhanced in higher education. Because we talked a lot about our cultural and sports and performing arts. And I think that the, I think everybody that's, that's interested in this job should know that this county supports public education from pre-K to K-12 and on through the community college. So I, I would have emphasized that. I would have, the only thing I see that in the report that really discusses the need for a next president to have some decisiveness and some willingness to, to implement change that makes people uncomfortable is the bullet point about transformative and resourceful administrative leadership. And I think we need transformative and resourceful visionary leadership, which will meet the needs of academic teaching and learning in the future. In the first bullet point, it says, it ends with applicable senior-level experience may apply. I, I felt like that was a little bit of a throwaway. I would have said are welcome or something that indicates that you don't, just because you don't have a doctorate doesn't disqualify you in my mind. And I, I use General Myers at Kansas State as an example. I use Mr. Forsey at the University of Missouri when he was chancellor there. And so I think those are, those are the points that I want to make sure a candidate looking at us understands. I would welcome anybody that has the qualifications of leading a large and diverse organization. I will, I want somebody that understands this county supports public education. And I want somebody who's willing to be transformative and to lead change because it's not easy to do.
Those points are well made. I would say that I, I was a little apprehensive about how long it would take us to get a consensus on the language because some might say it should say shell and some might say it should say will and so. But I was really pleased on the 24th, and I think Dr. Harvey alluded to it as well, we had consensus of all of the committee members saying, this is really the draft that we should send. I like your bullet point about K through 12 education emphasis. That's something we perhaps can, we can, I don't know if we can add that or at least talk about that in terms of the piece. But we'll, I hate to, I hate to change it without the search committee coming back.
I don't, I'm not asking you to change it. I, I think it's an excellent document. And we all would have added something a little different. I just wanted to make sure those are on the record.
Any other comments or questions? Any comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And the, the timeline that we're working on is tentative. I, I don't know that we, we, we said we would approve the timeline. That has some potential moving dates, but we'll keep you informed as to that. But we, we think it's a, it's a really good working timeline right, right now. New business? Any new business? I don't think so. Consent agenda is the part of the agenda where we deal with a lot of routine items. Unless someone wants to pull an item off the agenda, I would ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
I got it.
We have a motion and a second.
I think I'd like to pull the HR addendum that just came out today.
Which number is that, trustee Lawson?
It's not. It's the.
It's not. It's the HR addendum. So, but usually that gets in, be sent agenda.
So it's, it's human resources, C? Item C?
Okay, yep.
Okay, we'll pull item C. Any other items to be pulled? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Trustee Lawson.
So I'm just questioning, it looks like a two-level demotion from our VP of General Counsel, from Vice President to Executive Director of Legal Affairs. I feel like that was something that probably should have been consulted through the board. So I'm just curious as to how that decision was made.
Sure. I'll take that one. Sure.
It's a tough decision. The, you know, when this happens, the opportunity, it's, while it's a great loss, I wanted to say some complimentary things about Tanya and her role here. But one of those things also is a self-assessment of the position itself and where is that position going to go in the future? When it was originally set up, it was not what, the position that we have today. It was not at the VP level. It was much more focused on internal legal issues. And when we stepped back, it was, and it also didn't report to the president. It wasn't on cabinet. And so as we assess this at, at the cabinet level, the decision was made was we'll bring it back, we'll fill the position, but we'll kind of take it back to where it was. It will not be on cabinet. It will not report to the president. The incoming president, if so desires, can make it a cabinet, cabinet level position, can make it a VP level position. But for, for the time being, that position will focus on the day-to-day legal affairs of the college. And so that was the decision and that's, and that's the rationale for it.
Trustee Musil.
Well, I'll go ahead and move to approve item 11C, the HR addendum, and then speak to it if I get a second.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments?
Well, I was lucky enough to be involved in the hiring interview of Tanya Wilson, even though I hadn't, I'd been elected to the board but hadn't taken my position yet. And I, I think Joe maybe understated the fact that Tanya grew into a super valuable member of the leadership team on campus, which was reflected in her elevation to a Vice President position as well as General Counsel. And we, we are going to be very sad for you to go. But I think the, the structuring of the position that has been recommended, and that was explained to all of us on the board in an email earlier today or this week, is the right move. I don't think you would automatically try to find a successor as a VP and General Counsel unless you have somebody that, that starts in a position lower and shows the same kind of talent level, commitment to the college, wisdom, risk analysis that Tanya showed in the last eight years. So I congratulate Tanya. I, I really hate to see her go, but I think this is exactly the kind of an administrative decision that a president needs to and should make.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
Will we have an executive session for the board to be able to do an exit interview with Tanya?
Not planned. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. One no?
Two no's.
One, two, three, four to two. Let the writers.
I wanted to say.
That motion was already made.
That's not reason enough to say no, but.
I will join you there.
Well, a motion carries. I, and it's a good question, trustee Lawson. I, I believe that, you know, I agree with trustee Cross and everybody else that says we don't want you to leave. You've, you've raised the level of that whole position. I know when I came on board 10 years ago, we would have an executive session almost every night and we had a lot of external attorney's fees. And you have really made a big difference in terms of not just eliminating those cases, but helping train and educate a lot of people on this campus of how to deal with issues and people in a very professional way. So I'm one also that is sorry to see you leave. Our charge though is to find somebody that can succeed you in a like manner. So, Dr. Sobchak, I think you had additional comments.
Well, for those of you who weren't here when, before we had legal counsel in-house, it was fine. But clearly there were some things that we needed to look at and reassess and do a better job of. And when Tanya was brought on board, she took those, she, she took those objectives and with great discipline and thought, basically created the legal department out of, out of nothing. And, you know, that was a great opportunity to, to take it in the wrong direction. But it was never an issue. And during that process, the legal counsel became a source of great confidence and, and, and just counsel for all of us. And so I just can't, on behalf of the institution, I want to thank you. But also I want to thank you for the humor, the, the personality, the calm that you brought to all those discussions we had on issues over the years. So thank you, Tanya. You'll be, you'll be missed.
Thank you. Wish you the very, very best. We have no executive session. I would move for adjournment.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Good luck trick-or-treating.